All right. Good morning, everyone. Let me call this this meeting to order. This is the 2022 Budget Workshop and Public Hearing Number One for the Millage Rate. I will proceed directly into this and call on Jennifer Hallman to come up and present to us the 2021 Millage Rate presentation.
All right. Good morning. Everybody can hear me?
Yeah.
All right. As you stated, Mayor, this is the first presentation we have regarding the millage rate. So we'll just dive right into it. Maybe not.
All right. While we're having a few technical difficulties, you want to just, do you have a paper?
I do. Sure.
Maybe you could just start some of the introduction.
Absolutely. Just wanted to start off with stating what is in the digest. Just to kind of give a basic knowledge, it includes real property and personal property, motor vehicles, mobile homes, timber and heavy-duty equipment. All of those items equal your total gross digest. Then you have different exemptions that are included in the digest. So when you subtract that from your gross digest, you have your net digest. The next page.
Well, hold on. I'm not going to be able to do that.
Okay.
Because we don't all have copies, right? Do you have extra copies?
Yeah, everybody up there should have.
You all have your copy now of this presentation?
Yes.
All right, go ahead. I don't have it laying right here. Go ahead. I have a copy, but it's in the book.
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead, Jennifer.
Sure. The next page is the Page Three is Villarica's 2021 Gross Digest. As you know, digest consists of multiple things, residential being your largest one at 49%, industrial being at 26%, and commercial being at 22%. The other ones make up 2%, which is utilities, motor vehicles, agriculture, conservation, and mobile homes. On Page Four, you can see there's two types of growth in the digest or two types of changes that happen each year with the digest. The first change is your reassessment inflationary growth. That is exactly what it is. It's just when the properties are reassessed each year. That is a type of growth in the digest, and we will talk about the calculation of what you hear about the rollback. That is the amount, whatever happens in this column, the reassessment inflationary growth, this is where you have to consider the rollback calculation. The next type of growth is new growth in the digest.
Hold on a second. Sorry.
It's all right.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. The next growth in the digest is new growth, and that is new construction, new improvements on homes that were not in the prior year's digest or on the assessed value. There we go. All right, now we're ready to roll. So when you take the reassessment and inflationary growth, you add the new growth, then you get the total digest growth for 2021. The next slide will show you what each of those breakouts, how that impacted Villarica for 2021. You can see the first arrow is at 3.71 inflationary growth. That means reassessments. Growth in the digest reflected 3.71%, which was around $26 million. The new growth, of course, like everybody was impacted with COVID, pretty much growth stalled over the past year, but we did experience some new growth of just under 1% at .77%. So the total impact or the total change from last year's digest to this year's digest is 4.48% increase. Just a little known fact, just to kind of keep in the back of your head, the value of one mill. For every mill that's levied, the revenue that's generated is $732,000. As you know, Villarica split up between two different counties, Douglas and Carroll. So we just wanted to take another look at this, at the inflationary and the new growth and the total growth to kind of let you know the breakdown from Douglas County and Carroll County. Douglas County had higher inflationary growth and lower new growth, but both experienced both inflationary and new growth. But you can see Douglas County was at 4.69, Carroll County's inflationary was at 3.12. So overall, there's 3.71 in inflationary growth. New growth for Douglas County was .3, Carroll County was 1.5, and total was .77. As I talked about the reassessment inflationary growth, state law requires that you calculate what that millage rate equivalent would be for a rollback to offset any inflationary increases in the digest. So this is just a mathematical formula, just to kind of, just information. You take that inflationary growth at 26 million, you divide that by your total net digest, and you multiply it by your prior year's millage rate to get that rollback equivalent. And for 2021, it is .222. So when you take 2020's millage rate at 6.25, you rollback .222. Then the starting base millage rate that you have to start looking into and seeing if you want to rollback or not is 6.028. We are recommending, and this budget you will see in a later presentation, is a very lean budget, and we're going to need that inflationary growth. We're going to need that to not rollback the millage rate in order to maintain basic services for Villarica. So our recommendation is to maintain the same millage rate at 6.25, and that additional revenue from not rolling back would be $162,000. This is a bunch of numbers, but it's something that is published in the paper. We're required to publish the current 2021 Tax Digest and the five-year history of the levy. And you can see down, the last column is the 2021. And as one of the council members had questioned me prior to this meeting, yes, you do see that the total tax increase is $196,000 versus the 162 that I mentioned in the prior slide. The difference around $30-something thousand, that is the additional revenue that you get from the new growth. And remember, we had small .77% new growth, and that equates to about $32,000. Here's the millage rate schedule due to the state requirements. Even though we are asking to maintain the exact same millage rate as last year, the state still considers that a tax increase. So we have to advertise, which we have been doing, and we have to have three public hearings. This one, after this presentation, would be the first public hearing. Then we would have the second one this evening at 6:00. And then next Tuesday, we would have the third and final public hearing at 6:00. And then we would ask for the adoption of the millage rate after that public hearing, Number Three, so that we can meet the requirements to send it on to the Tax Commissioner so they can start their process with the state. And I'm here for any questions you may have.
All right. Counsel, does anyone have any questions for Jennifer at this first millage public hearing?
Jennifer, do you have the breakout between Douglas County and Carroll County on the tax digest for real property?
Yes, we have that in a spreadsheet. I just don't have that in this presentation. But we have the breakout of how each category's trended for both Douglas and separate with Carroll.
Would you send that to me?
I sure will.
All right. Anyone else? Ms. McPherson?
I wouldn't mind seeing that, too.
Sure. I'll just send it to everyone.
Anything that we ask for here, send it to everybody.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Mr. Mopftahan.
I have a generic question. I just want to kind of know where this kind of... So, for example, I bought a house last year. It was new construction. And if you look at the old tax records, it was valued at vacant land, $18,750. And now on the current Carroll County tax, this website, it's increased because obviously it's improved now. So does that go in the new growth column or the inflationary growth column, since it's...
If it was not in last year's digest as that improvement or that home, then it would be considered new for this year. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Well, let me, hold on just a second. Let me clarify that, though, because it's not that it wasn't in there, it's that it was at a different value.
Correct.
They said it was $18,000.
The land was in there, but not the construction of the home.
Not the improvement.
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Young.
The notice of property tax increase that went out to the newspaper, the last paragraph gives an example. For most of the homes in my subdivision, that example is not very realistic. Because it says a fair market value of $200,000, the tax increase is $17. Mine was $145,000, so eight times larger. Is that number statistically representative of the tax digest? Or where does that number come from? This example, where does it come from?
Okay, that is a state requirement. You are to...
No, I know it's a state requirement, but is the number a state requirement or is that derived from the tax digest?
Both. It is a calculation that you take the fair market value and you do the calculation as if, but it's only for City of Villarica.
A $200,000 home with a fair market value of $200,000 is representative of the average in Villarica?
Yes, sir.
You got those from each county's tax assessor?
That is correct.
County or Villarica?
Each county.
Each county.
The county does the assessment, so we would only be able to get the number from each of the counties. And then you use the average from each county to say this would be representative across the board. Obviously, individual homes are going to be different. Some people saw no increase. Some people's values went down, and according to Mr. Young, his went way up. He called me about this the other day and let me know that mine didn't move. So he's been looking at everybody's. Mr. Barber.
So in your example, was that all three or this city? Was it all three, city, county, schools? Was 145 or this city?
No, just the city.
Yeah, because hers is just the city.
Yeah, well, my city tax last year, 2020, was $677.25. This year, it's $822.50, which is an increase of $145.25. So I'm saying this $17 represents somewhere else but not Mary Lake. So where do we get a representative example? Yes.
How much, what percentage did your assessment grow? Because that's where...
My assessment went up 20%.
Well, theirs.
Well, and most of my neighborhood did. I looked at some, the neighborhood next to mine went up 19%. But then when I went to South Harbor, it was, it was three-quarters of them lost value and one-quarter went up, you know. So I don't know, I don't know what happened in South Harbor, but I would just... I went there because that's where Gil's house was, so I wanted to see what his did. And, you know, so I'm just saying that this number, $17.76, is going to mislead a lot of people in Mary Lake.
Okay. Well, that may be, I think what we're trying to do here is balance the state requirement with the advertisement versus educating the public for how they would calculate their own, the impact of each individual. But your point is well-taken. As I said, there's, some people have an increase, some people have a decrease. But what this is, is the representative number across the whole city, rather than trying to pick out neighborhoods or wards or something like that.
Correct.
But I absolutely know what your point is. And in his case, his went up a lot more than mine, so he's, he's a little more impacted by it. Okay, anybody else? Okay. If there are no further questions, I will, this was a millage rate presentation. So we will go ahead and move on. That was Number One. And now we will move on to a public hearing on millage Number One. So I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak regarding the millage rate presentation? If there are, I'd ask you to come up, and since nobody's moving, I'll close the public hearing. And note that there were no, there were no public comments on public hearing Number One for the millage rate. Okay, now we'll move on to item A3, which is a presentation, which is a 2022 Budget Workshop. And I'm going to start by doing something that I haven't done in recent years. But I'm going to read my entire transmittal letter. So Chief, did you bring popcorn? I wasn't sure if you were actually going to bring it. It could take a few minutes, but one of the reasons I'm going to do it is because, one, we put a lot of work into doing that, and we did it so that we could summarize in a letter form what this budget contained. And I'm sure everybody spent time reading it, but if you didn't, you get to hear me read it. And better yet, the public will hear this if they had not heard it before. So this letter was transmitted to the council last Tuesday. It was delayed because I wasn't finished. It could have been sent out two days prior to that, which was on the previous Friday. But you all have had it since last Tuesday, and here is the transmittal letter. "The city charter requires that the city manager prepare a budget for submission to the council, and that the mayor shall present the budget with a statement from the mayor. The annual budget is among the most important and consequential duties we undertake as representatives of the people. The budget lays out our priorities for the upcoming year and defines how the city will prioritize funding. The budget must be an honest portrayal of our goals and intentions and should only be amended due to unforeseen circumstances, not incompetent budgeting. I have met with the city manager and senior staff to further reduce the preliminary budget, and this is what I present for your consideration now. Please find enclosed the 2022 proposed operating and capital budget. Overall, the citywide 2022 budget is less than the 2021 budget by 8%. While the original proposed citywide budget reflected a 12% increase compared to the 2021 adopted budget, the newly amended budget presented here shows an 8% decrease compared to the 2021 budget. The 2022 budget is very lean, but still allows the city to maintain current operations. The pandemic continues to put a strain on revenues for the 2022 budget. Some revenue sources, such as sales tax, real estate tax, hotel and motel tax, are steadily improving. However, other revenues are recovering at a much slower rate. For example, residential and commercial permits are experiencing the largest decline. There are several developments in the queue. However, due to the current economy, which consists of high unemployment and cost of construction, these developments have been stalled. Even the strain on revenues, even with the strain on revenues, the city continues to provide all government services with no interruption. The cost to provide all of the services is more expensive than prior years. While this budget does not include a cost of living increase, benefits such as health insurance, workers' compensation, and retirement have increased by $304,086. In addition, various operating expenses have increased, such as liability insurance, utilities, fuel, and supplies due to inflation and other economic factors. Significant highlights of the October 1, 2021 through September 30, 2022 budget include revenues. The total budgeted revenues are proposed to decrease by 8% compared to the current year budget." See, there'll be some notes in here. "The major revenue changes are as follows. General Fund: Property tax revenues are based on the millage rate of 6.25. Sales tax revenues have increased $272,139. Title ad valorem tax revenues increased $175,000 based on current year trends. Building permit revenue has decreased by $382,500 due to the delay of multiple commercial and residential permits. Recreation and Pine Mountain Gold Museum revenues have increased $119,000 due to improved programming compared to fiscal year 21. Transfer from Water and Sewer Fund for administrative services increased $128,672. Transfer to General Fund Capital Project Fund decreased $913,858. There are less capital projects included in the budget for 2022 compared to 2021. Enterprise Funds: This budget proposes water volume rate increase by 5.6%, which is $131,000. This equates to an 86-cent monthly increase for the average customer. This budget proposes no increases on sewer rates. This budget proposes sanitation rate increases for customers that have an additional cart from $5.45 to $12.66. Since GFL no longer provided a recycling program, the city offered additional carts at a reduced rate. However, this has placed a financial strain on the Sanitation and Solid Waste Fund. The rate being proposed for additional carts is the same rate GFL charges the city. We understand the citizens' desire to recycle, and we are committed to finding alternative recycling options. Hotel Fund: Hotel revenues have increased 19% based on current trends. Expenses and expenditures: The total budgeted expenditures have decreased by 8% compared to the prior year. The citywide summary of expenditures can be found on Pages 29 through 30. Some of the significant expenditure items included in the 2022 budget are as follows. General Fund: Contribution to the Health Care Fund for Claims and Administrative Costs: $2,014,564, which is an increase of $146,750 from the prior year. Workers' Compensation Expenditures: $238,680, which is an increase of $19,778 from the prior year. Retirement Contribution: $531,106, that's an increase of $47,340. Employee Survey: Best Places to Work: $6,800. Director Evaluations: $1,500. Text My Gov Communication Service for $6,100. Photographer Michael Valentine Annual Stipend for $4,200. Citywide LED Interior Retrofits: Materials Only $45,000. Temporary Employees for Grounds Maintenance and Streets Since the Inmate Crews Are Not Available: Increased Maintenance Repairs for All City Facilities; Travel and Training for All Departments, Including Elected Officials and City Staff. Water Sewer Fund: Funds allocated for maintenance and repairs for the water sewer plants, lift stations, dams, and other facilities. Stormwater Fund: Consultant for the Creation of a Stormwater Utility for $150,000. Capital: A total of $7.4 million in capital projects is included in the 2022 budget. The entire 2022 capital list can be found on Page 25. I'm going to highlight a few of those here. General Fund: Six Police Vehicles: $249,707 plus $94,873 from SPOLOST. Generator for Police and Courthouse: $175,000. Water and Sewer Fund: Utilities at Connors Road, Highway 78, Mini Roundabout for $200,000. Engineering for Waterline Extension over Liberty Road Bridge for $50,000. Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition, which is SCADA System Upgrade, for $400,000. North Plant: $1.9 million of a $10 million project. Shoreline Lift Station Redirect for $315,000. Vanworth Road Lift Station, Chapman Project, for $1.5 million. Forest Main Reroutes: Fullerville, Old Town, Florence Circle, Toronto, Edge Road for $95,000. 70-kilowatt Generator with a Float System for $80,000. Wastewater Truck, F-250, for $40,000. Collection and Distribution Truck, F-450, with Utility Body for $48,000. 2016 SPOLOST Fund: Connors Road Park for $190,000. Streets and Sidewalks for $700,000, plus $185,633 from LMIG. Stormwater Fund: Stormwater Improvements for $100,000. Sanitation Solid Waste Fund: Brush Chipper for $90,000. Personnel: The General Fund includes a full-time Public Information Officer at a cost of $50,000, which is $32,000 salary plus $18,000 in benefits. The Water and Sewer Fund includes one additional position of wastewater operator for a total $61,673 salary and benefits. Also, in order to stay competitive with surrounding areas, 25 Water and Sewer Fund positions as pay rates are adjusted for a total of $83,000. Self-funded Insurance: The 2022 budget includes just under $2.2 million for self-funded insurance. This is an increase of $172,358. The city went self-funded on October 1, 2017, and the cash savings is over $690,000. Additionally, we only budget 90% of the maximum claims, which reduces the amount that needs to be budgeted with the personnel expenditures. Administrative Costs are budgeted around $585,000. Maximum Claims are estimated at $1.7 million, but we only budgeted 90% of the maximum claim amount for a total of $1.5 million. The total monthly premium for employee-only coverage is $757.48. Employees will continue to contribute 5% for single coverage and 30% of any additional coverage, which would be spouse, children, or family. Debt Service: The budget calls for debt service of $2.3 million. This is a decrease of $1,000 from the previous year's bond payment. Up until fiscal year 2017, the debt service was, at least partially, funded by the General Fund or even SPOLOST funds. This is the fifth budget year when the debt service has been completely funded by the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund. As you look at the budget I'm proposing, I hope you will see, as I do, the fundamental need for the less familiar items I have included. For example, the addition of a Public Information Officer. As our city grows, the need for transparent information to the public becomes ever more crucial. The position will consolidate how information is shared and presented to the public, bringing more efficiency and a clearer picture. To that end, you will also see that I'm proposing the Text My Gov service to allow us to communicate with our residents via text messaging. Additionally, you will find money budgeted for employee surveys. This will give us an opportunity to understand how our workforce sees their current job and future with our city, and hopefully allow us to head off problem areas that lead to costly turnover. You will also see that I have included money for director evaluations. This will allow us to get a comprehensive evaluation of all department heads, including the city manager and deputy city manager. We are fortunate in our city to have dedicated volunteers who do a great service for our city day in and day out. In most instances, our volunteers give us their service and sweat, and we are forever grateful to them. In some cases, we get even more. In this budget, I want to recognize an individual who gives their service and sweat as well as undergoes significant expense. I am proposing that we include a monthly stipend of $350 to Michael Valentine, who attends every city event, capturing memories for the city and using his own equipment. I want to stress that Michael Valentine is a dedicated volunteer and would no doubt continue to do what he does at his own expense. That being said, I am still proposing that this city contribute to his personal expenses in this budget. This item would have to be reconsidered every year. I look forward to working together with the council and the city staff to adopt the 2022 Operating in Capital Budget, as I stated in the opening of this letter. Budgets lay out an honest prioritization of the upcoming year, and I am sure individual council members may well see priorities differently. In those cases, I look forward to an honest and frank discussion. Where the council, as a body, is prepared to make changes, I too am open to consideration. There is no doubt, we all have the best interests of our city at heart, and therefore, together, we will make the best decisions going forward. I knew it was that long because I wrote it, but I didn't realize it was going to take me that long to read it. So did anybody fall asleep? If you did, it's time to wake up. All right. At this time, Jennifer Hallman has prepared a Budget Workshop presentation. And almost from day one, Jennifer, you came to work for us when? April, March?
March.
Okay, March. And as we've discussed, did you start working on the budget the day you got here or the day after?
The day after.
The day after. So she is intimately familiar with this budget, and she today is going to make a presentation for your consideration. And afterwards, we will entertain questions. Now, I'm going to ask you, because I didn't do it before, so I'll ask you now. While you're doing this presentation, are you comfortable with being interrupted with questions? Or would you like us to save that to the end?
I'm comfortable with whatever y'all are comfortable with.
All right, then I will make this less formal. And if you wish to interject a question in the middle of her presentation, just let me know, and we'll recognize you. All right, go ahead.
Okay. Let me start off by saying, as the mayor stated before, this is a very lengthy process that started very early on in the year. It's usually a five-to-six-month process. We always kid around in finance, saying that we're really never in the current year because we spend the first six months of the new fiscal year dealing with the audit, and then the last six months of the current fiscal year dealing with the future, next year's budget. So I'm saying there's a lot of time, a lot of effort goes into it from staff, directors, employees. Everybody has a say-so. We meet with department heads. I work with the deputy city manager and city manager, as well as the mayor, to come up with... up with this proposed budget that I'm about to show. The total proposed budget for 2022 is around $37.8 million, with the larger percentage, of course, being the main operations of the general fund at 42%, water and sewer at 26%, and then your sanitation at 4%. A different fund that's in here that wasn't in here last year is your American Rescue or your ARPA funds. As you know, we received 50% of the $6 million this year, and we're going to be receiving the other 50%, which is just under $3 million in 2022. Taking the three major funds, the general fund and the two major enterprise funds, you can see the general fund had a slight increase of 2% compared to the current 2021 budget. The water and sewer fund had a decrease of 18%, and the sanitation fund had an increase of 9%. Just to kind of hit a high level regarding our revenues, of course, we have many revenues, revenue sources, but we wanted to hit the highlights of the ones that maybe had a significant increase or a significant decrease and maybe explain why we put these projections in there. As stated, we did set the budget at 6.25, with the revenue being at a 6.25 millage rate. As the mayor stated, this is a very, very lean budget. While there are some capital items or some operating items that were not in the prior year, the capital projects are a lot significantly lower than what they were last year. So, the millage rate not rolling back is mainly just for the, the operations, not really any kind of capital projects. We are still seeing, even though, you know, with COVID, with the economy, we still are seeing an increase in our sales tax. It's still trending upwards, which is a good thing. So, we have about $272,000 increase in our current, what we estimated for next year's sales tax. $175,000 increase in our title avalorum tax. We have two decreases, which are substantial, that have impacted us this year, and we are budgeting conservatively that, that, that the building permits are going to experience a decrease of $382,000 compared to what we budgeted this year, as well as the building plan review fees of around $34,000 decrease. Our recreation fees are increasing due to increased programming. Since COVID, our programming is probably not exactly back to normal, but it's getting there, and so we see that trend as well.
Jennifer. So, when it comes to the sales tax and the increase in avalorum tax, I mean, I think, as everyone kind of is aware, there seems to be a high inflationary period right now, particularly on the avalorum tax, I think, when it comes to the vehicles and everything. Did we account at all for some of that easing? And then, maybe?
We, we did, in the sense that the way it's trending, if we kept that trend the same, we actually budgeted or estimated less than what it's actually trending right now.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So, we did take, take some account for that. Very good.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes.
Ms. McPherson, go ahead.
Thanks. Also, I think the fact, not just the inflation, but people were being sent money from the government, and that money was being spent. There was a lot of money pushed into the system, which is part of the inflation, but there was more spending, and that will probably be altered too, because that money isn't continuing, at least not in all its forms.
Correct.
All right. Anybody else? All right, go ahead, Jennifer.
Sure. The other three revenue categories, one the mayor briefly touched on in the letter, proposed 5.61% wa, water volume rate increase, which would generate around $131,000. Approximately, this would be an impact of about 86 cents per month for the average customer. We're wanting to do this to have Villarica move closer and closer to water independence, their independence. And so, there's a lot of capital projects, there's a lot of things that we need to do. So, we need to be able to build up our cash, build up our assets, improve our assets, so that we can make those steps to become water independent. The details of this, we're still working out. Sarah and I are working out the details on this, but this is something that we are proposing in this year's budget, and it would be something that would be for the next four years.
Okay. And I haven't seen your, this, this presentation beyond this, but when we first looked at this, you had some numbers for me that showed the average consumption, and that's where this 86 cents come from, right?
Correct.
And that's what I want you to talk about. So, you, what this is based on is how many thousand gallons on average? Sarah, do you remember?
4,000.
All right. So, this is the average use, residential use in the city of Villarica. If you use about 4,000 gallons a month, you would see an 86 cents increase. Obviously, if you use more, that 86 cents will be bigger. If you use less, that 86 cents will be smaller. This is a strategy as we move toward some, some more significant developments with regard to our current water usage and how we buy water. So, this is a, this is a way for us to plan rather than hit everyone at once in, in, in four, three or four years, when we see some changes to our, our current water agreements. Okay? All right. I wanted to just say that part. Mr. Young.
Jennifer, are there any changes proposed for commercial industrial water users?
Yes. I'm going to defer to Sarah because she's got the spreadsheet to be able to go in detail.
Yes. So, they would see a 5.61% water volume rate increase as well. So, we ran some numbers. A commercial user, just as an example, and this was based on average use last year, maybe the year before. A commercial user, a one-inch user, as we refer to them, the size of their meter, who uses 10,500 gallons, their increase would be $2.49 per month. I can give you a couple other examples. And we didn't include this, these details in this slide. We are having another budget workshop next week, and we figured we'd focus on that a little more next week. A two-inch commercial user who uses 45,000 gallons a month, their increase would be $10.96.
So, I, I do want to make sure, and I meant to do this already. This is the first presentation. This is the largest overview, is what we're doing here today. So, we might not get really deep in the weeds, but some of these things, and this can be kind of sensitive. And when we buy water and when we make water, there's no difference between the, the types of customers we're going to, we're going to sell it to. So, this increase applies across the board. It's just that how you would look at the impact of, of industry versus residential, we just didn't get into the weeds of that in this presentation. But, Ms. McPherson, did you have a question?
One of the questions was answered when you asked her to clarify, so that's good. And I don't need to get in the weeds on this today, but I know you know, when you're saying the person that, you know, or business that uses this many gallons, I would be interested next time, when we get a little bit more in the weeds, say, our average mom-and-pop restaurant, you know, water usage, what it would do to businesses like that. I don't need that now, though.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Jennifer. Go ahead.
We, in this budget for FY '22, there's no sewer rate increase, or we're not proposing. The thing that we're proposing, or the rate increase we're proposing on sanitation, is only on the additional cart. As you're aware, and Sarah, you may have to help me out on this a little bit, as you aware, sometimes, some, at some point last year, GFL came to the city and was going to charge the city a significant rate increase due to our recycling program. And in order to avoid that recycling, that significant rate increase, it was decided that we would not recycle, but we would offer an additional cart to citizens for $5, even though it's costing the city over $12. So, it was a money loser to begin with, but we felt like that, or y'all felt like at the time, that was the choice that needed to be made to help the citizens that needed the capacity to have a second cart. Now that a year's gone into it, we have seen that the financial strain that it's put on the sanitation and, and fund, it's not sustainable. So, what we're proposing in this plan is to, the second cart is to increase the rate from $5 to $12.66.
Our cost.
Our, which is only our cost. There's no additional fee or fees added to that in order for us to at least break even. So, that's, that's included in this proposal for this budget.
Right. And I think it would be fair for someone to ask, maybe one of these council members or maybe the public would ask, didn't we foresee this? Well, the truth is, we did not foresee it, because when we looked at the current number of second can users at the time, that number, and I'm going to, I don't know exactly, but it was in the 200 range.
Correct.
Am I, am I correct? And when we took away the recycle can, which most people were using for trash, I know some people weren't, but most were. That was the, the feedback we were getting. We had people literally going out, opening these cans, looking at them and seeing what was happening. But even in the cases where there was recycled material in there, almost all of it was going to the landfill. So, we knew that folks were using those blue cans for more than just recycle material, they're using it for trash, but we had no idea that the number of people who would take the second can would increase fourfold. And since the city was taking the hit on it, we now realize that we can't do that. We can't put everybody else on the hook for some $8 a month for some 600 cans. So, that's why we're looking at this. However, I have asked staff to look at recycle options. They are looking at some things on the Carroll County side, because they already have recycling centers, and we are looking at other things that we can do. There's not really much of a market, except maybe for aluminum, maybe some metal. But, but I just want to assure everyone that we are still looking for recycle options, but, but this increase is necessary, because if you don't do this increase, we're going to have to do something different in this budget to account for this money, because this budget anticipates that you agree with this, with this change in fee structure on the second can. Okay. Council, do you have any questions?
I think it's obvious that we can't subsidize certain people at the expense of everybody else.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Thank you. Go ahead, Jennifer.
Okay. So, now that we've reviewed expenditures, here's a high-level view, I mean, of revenues, here's a high-level view of expenditures. Right now, the proposed budget has $100,000 in contingency. There was a 13% increase in the retirement contribution of around $62,000. There was 11% increase in healthcare claims and administration fees of $146,000. A 26% increase in workers' comp premiums, which was $49,000. Some additional items that the mayor addressed in his letter was around $6,800 for an employee survey regarding the best places to work, and then the, what we're calling 360 evaluations, which is around $1,500 for director evaluations. There's $6,100 for Text My Gov communication services. This would improve the communications to the citizens. Right now, we're using robo-calls and primarily mainly for water issues. This could be expanded to all areas of government, parks and recreation, building permits. So, it would just help the communication to the citizens.
A question, is that an annual fee?
The $6,100 is the initial fee, and then I believe it's $4,500 for every year after that.
Okay.
All right. Go ahead.
Okay. $4,200, which is $350 a month for photographer Mike Valentine. $45,000 for citywide LED interior retrofits, that's the materials only. We have some temporary employees for grounds, maintenance, and streets due to not having the prisoners' work detail. So, just those two items is around 260, over $262,000. The increased maintenance and repairs on all city facilities, and then $150,000 for a consultant for the creation of the stormwater utility, which of that $150,000, around $124,000 is fund balance in the stormwater fund, and the difference would be coming out of the fund.
Okay. All right. Mr. Young.
Jennifer, on the workers' comp 26% increase, was that representative of all the cities around our size, or was there a change in our category status?
From what we could see, is they do an initial premium for us, and then about six to nine months later, they take our data and they perform an audit. And then usually, we owe anywhere between $30,000 to $60,000. So, based on the trends of how we've been, our workers' comp premiums have been, it was, that's the way it was trending, was around a 29% increase.
So, that doesn't sound like you compared it to other jurisdictions. It sounds like it's just us and our own performance. Okay. All right. That makes sense. Anybody else? All right. Go ahead.
Okay. Let's jump into personnel, which is 12.8 million of the budget, which is very typical of a, a government, because we are service-oriented, so a lot of our cost comes from salary and benefits. You can see the general fund makes up 78% of the 12.8 million in personnel cost. Water and sewer make up 19%, sanitation 2%, and stormwater 1%. The two additional personnel positions that were included in this proposed budget is a public information officer with a total of 50,000, with 32,000 being salary, 18,000 being benefits. Wastewater operator, which would be in the water and sewer fund, be a total of 62,000, 39,000 salary, and $23,000 in benefits. The only pay adjustments, as the mayor mentioned, there's no COLAs, there's, there's nothing in the budget regarding just overall personnel increases, except for the water and sewer fund, for the water and sewer employees, there's a 7.5% increase. This is needed in order to stay competitive with surrounding areas and to avoid the turnover that we've been experiencing with the city, in the city.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on this? Mr. Young.
Have, have we looked at all the other positions, police? How far behind the average they're going to fall if we don't do a COLA?
We have not.
We have not.
So, I, I know that police officers are very hard to find right now, you know, because of a lot of things, but pay is one of them. And there's, there's other city employees that, that are hard to replace. We have a hard time filling them. We always have gaps. So, the staying up with, with the surrounding area, what, what the average is, is, you know, pretty important. We've done some payroll salary studies, we've done some, some upgrades in people, but if we skip that for a year, we're going to fall behind. So, how much do we fall behind?
So, I think we're in danger. Mr. Carter, just a second. So, I think we are in danger in, in, in some of those areas, and, and we did want to find a way to, to, to do that. I have asked the chief, and he is putting together some numbers in how we might be able to address some of, some pay concerns in the police department. That is not a, a dead issue. It's just that in presenting this budget, we looked for where we were having the biggest impact in losses and where it was the most difficult for us to retain and attract employees. And this has actually been going on really since about, y'all presented this maybe in March, does that sound about right? At that time, they went back and did comparisons to other authorities all around us to show what their comparable positions were paying, because we knew we were losing people, and they were directly going to an authority within 15 minutes of Villarica. So, that's why this one's looked at. But your point is well-taken, and there are other departments, and police and, and wastewater and, and water are the two most difficult departments that we deal with in terms of retaining and attracting employees. And, and it's not that that's off the table, it's just that we're going to have to look at it when, in our next budget session. Maybe we'll have some numbers from the chief then. Mr. Carter.
Yeah. My question would be, have we looked at the surrounding cities to see if they're doing COLAs for their departments? Have we taken a look at the people around, the cities around us?
We have not. I don't know if you want to get into this now, but as we've said, this budget's very lean, and we've cut nearly every extra request that all the departments have made, in the general fund at least, for capital, for personnel. I mean, more personnel was requested, more police was requested, more police cars were requested. We've, we've cut a lot already and didn't feel we had the funds. For instance, our COLA last year, 1.5%, which isn't, well, 1.5% increase last year was almost $100,000 for the whole city. So, I guess the question is, for the council, is that a priority, where we need to adjust other things? Jennifer, do you want to touch on how much we did eliminate in the request? Jennifer, do you wanna touch on how much we did eliminate in the request, how much we were not able to include?
Absolutely. And I have those, do you want me to pass those out as well?
Okay, my question really was, relative to the cities around us, are they giving COLAs? And that, that would put us behind if we didn't give one and they, all the way around us were. So I think we should know who is giving COLAs and who isn't.
Okay.
That's a fair question. Let's, uh, let's take a look at that.
Uh, but yeah, to, to piggyback off of what Sarah just mentioned regarding this being a very lean budget, this was something we discussed this morning and apologize for not having a slide on it. There was many dollars that had to be removed or cut from the request that departments requested. Just in capital projects alone, we had about, and this is just general fund. We had about $1.6 million in capital request. And right now, there is only about $519,000 in capital request included in this budget. In personnel requests, we had about $420,000 for additional positions. And only $50,000 is including, included in this budget. And then any other items that maybe didn't meet the capital threshold and were not additional personnel, just various operating expenses. There was 649,000, almost $650,000 requested and around 10%, 68,000 was, is included in this budget. So when we say this is a lean budget, it is a lean budget. There, there's not a lot of extra in here. And what is in here is needed. From a standpoint of, if it's a vehicle or a piece of equipment, it's, it's on its last leg and it needs to be replaced, or it's gonna cost us more to maintain it than it will be to replace it. And we'll go over those.
I appreciate that, but, and separately though, I do want you to just, for a moment, talk about capital, general fund funded capital versus SPOLOST. Just so that, because I know people are hearing big words, big numbers about, you know, capital projects. And then you just pointed out that almost none of that, none of the requested, but the, that was but, uh, general fund capital. Talk, just a little bit about the difference and why the, the SPOLOST funds still end up in the budget, even though we might be short or, or have a lean budget.
Correct. Yes, when we talk about the lean budget, we're talking about primarily your general fund. Your SPOLOST fund, your special purpose local option sales tax, that is money that we receive from both Carroll and Douglas for specific projects that are for capital. And they have their own funding source. It's not coming from millage rate, it's not coming from licenses and permits, it's coming from its own revenue source. So while we have to budget for those because it's a capital budget, it's not a strain on the general fund as items that you see on this list that are not covered by SPOLOST, do not have another funding source other than general fund that departments have asked for, and we just do not have the money to make it happen.
Right. And I know that the council understands this, but I wanna say this for the public because this will be uploaded back for the public. When you look, let's just say, I'm gonna take one for example, and you see the Connors Road Park, $190,000. I can't make the decision to not fund the Connors Road Park for $190,000 and put in new police officers. Because that money is funded directly from a referendum where, where the voters voted to specifically authorize that money for that project only. So I want, I just wanna be clear that, that you couldn't go through here and say, well, just don't do the park, and then you can buy that extra police car, because you can't do that. So that's why I wanted you to explain that. And I know the council gets that and, and maybe many people do, but sometimes it's worth repeating.
Yes.
So, all right, thank you.
And we actually have a slide that, when we start going into the capital items that are in there, the funding sources that go with those.
Excellent.
So it's, it's very self-explanatory in that sense as well.
Jennifer, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. McPherson.
Thank you for making that point because people will not understand that if that's not put out there. If I were sitting there reading through it, I'd go, well, if it's so lean, why are we spending 90,000 on a park? Why don't we delay that? And so, we really need to make sure that is publicly known. Because I'd be thinking the same thing. Also, just, I think it's important to note, whether it's salaries for police or whatever, we've addressed that over the years and done quite well. There have been factors come into play, which everybody knows, in the last year and a half, that have impacted police departments like we've never, we've never had this kind of turnover, never had this kind of turnover. And there could be some other factors. But if you look at the number of empty positions, city of Atlanta and numerous other places across the county, I mean, across the country, aside from locally, that's a real problem that we can't fix, you know, by ourselves. Also, I think it's important to realize the money we did get in with the American Rescue Plan, ARPA. I always call it ARP, but the A stands for something.
ACT.
ACT, okay, there we go. But anyway, water and sewer, I've been concerned about that almost every week that I read a city manager report and see either the empty slots or the somebody came and they're gone, somebody came and they're gone. And I, I imagine we do some investment with training and then they go somewhere else. So I'm very supportive of the fact that we're doing something in that area.
All right. Uh, go ahead, Jennifer.
Okay, the next fund that we're gonna tackle is our self-funded insurance for our healthcare. There is about, we're estimating around 11% projected increase in administration and claims. As mentioned, the budget is estimated at 90% of maximum claims. The remaining 10%, around $173,000, is savings that remain in the respective funds, in the general fund, the water and sewer fund, the sanitation fund. So for FY '22, we're estimating around $618,000 in administration fees and reinsurance fees, with 1.56 million in estimated claims. So our total budget for the self-funded insurance is a little over $2 million. We do have savings in that fund that we're able to build up. So instead of the savings going to an insurance carrier, if we were fully insured, it actually stays in our pockets because we're not having to deal with a middleman. So those savings stay with the city, stay in that fund. So when we have cases like we have experienced this year, where some of, sometimes we, our claims are a little bit higher than expected, those, that's what those savings are for, is to help cover and smooth out the expenditures from year to year on healthcare. Capital budget. Again, I will kinda go over each of these and let you know, as well as one of the final slides, the funding sources. You can see that we have in the budget right now, six police vehicles at $344,580. $250,000 roughly is coming from the general fund, while the remainder is coming from the Douglas SPOLOST. The wastewater truck, Ford 250 at 40,000, that's in the waste, that's in the water and sewer fund, as well as the collection and distribution truck at 48,000. So total vehicles included in this budget is $432,000. Requested and proposed capital for equipment in this budget is the public, I'm sorry, the police department and courthouse generator and the installation of that generator is $175,000. That is general fund. Douglas County Fire and EMS, that is Douglas SPOLOST. The brush chipper is the sanitation and fund at 90,000. So total equipment is around $422,000. Various parks or Pine Mountain Gold Museum improvements, that is Douglas SPOLOST at $101,456. Connors Road Park improvements, again, that's not coming out of the general fund, that is Douglas SPOLOST at 190,000. Street and sidewalks, 700,000, that is Douglas SPOLOST. Street improvements at $185,633, that is money we receive from GDOT. That is our L-MIG funding for this upcoming year. And then our storm water improvements at $100,000 is coming from our storm water fund. So our total side improvements are $1,277,089.
Okay. Let, let me go back and hit just a couple of things. The streets and sidewalks, everyone over in the, on the Douglas County side has seen a great deal of paving going on. Bobby here. We, we've done Mirror Lake Boulevard, we've done Connors Road, and those were huge projects. But our next, when you look at this budget, one of the things we intend to do next is some of the sidewalks that, that run down Connors Road because they are in bad shape. But again, I want to emphasize, this is Douglas County SPOLOST money. We must spend this money on streets and sidewalks, this particular pot. Now, there are multiple pots in the Douglas County SPOLOST. But again, I want to say to you, this money that we're spending on those sidewalks is money that went into the Douglas County SPOLOST from the referendum on the ballot that requires us to spend this money over there. We did some of the bigger projects early on, that SPOLOST runs out next year. Does it run out next year, is it? I think it is. Douglas County was a six-year SPOLOST.
Yeah, it was 2016 SPOLOST.
So, we, we, we're gonna get ready to look at another one coming, coming up next year. But, but in this one, this is spending out the final pieces of that SPOLOST money that was promised back in 2016. It's just taken a lot longer than, than we had hoped for some of these projects. But again, that money is not discretionary. We don't get to choose in, in a, in a, in a very specific way to spend that money in any way other than the referendum allowed for. Okay, any other questions? Ms. McPherson.
And it has to be on the Douglas County side.
That's right.
And I'll just say, for someone who lives on the Carroll County side, I also use those sidewalks and things on that side because we abut to one another. And some of those areas are very hazardous. Yeah.
I agree, thank you. All right, anybody else? All right, go ahead, Jennifer.
Okay. The next capital items is gonna be your water and your water and sewer fund. We have about $125,000 in new meters. Utilities at Connors Road, a Highway 78 mini roundabouts, 200,000. Engineering for the waterline extension over Liberty Road, bridge, 50,000. The supervisory control and data acquisition system upgrade at 400,000. And then various motor and motors drives pump replacements. I believe the city manager had talked about this at a previous meeting. Is, it's not that these replacements are needed right this minute, but we are trying to get them to build their inventory so that when something goes down, mostly with lead times that we have right now, with everything being months to be shipped, that we wanna go ahead and get these items in our inventory so when something goes down, we can move right along, replace it, and continue to provide the service.
Absolutely, okay. Any questions here? All right, go ahead, Jennifer.
The requested capital for sewer is the North Plant Alternate, either one or two. It's about a $10 million project. We've estimated that we're gonna need about $1.9 million for this upcoming year. The Shoreline Lift Station redirect at 315,000. The Vanworth Road Lift Station at 1.5 million. The seven, 70-kilowatt generator with float system, 80,000. The lift station pump controls at 24,000. And the force main reroutes at Fullerville, Old Town, Florence, Circle, Torano, and Edge Road at 95,000. So our total sewers around 3.9 million.
All right, any questions? All right, go ahead.
Distribution and collections in the water and sewer fund. We have the water and sewer pipe at 350,000. The service line and meter replacement at 50,000. The isolation valve replacements at 40,000. And the hydro stop insert valve equipment at 106,000. So total is 546,000.
All right, so that isolation valve replacement, that, that's supposed to be valve?
Oh, yes, valve, yes.
It's a typo, catch that. All right, go ahead.
So all of the capital for all funds, including SPOLOST, is 7.4 million dollars.
Now, do you have that number that you can rattle off?
There you go. That one?
Excellent.
Yes. So taking that capital, you can see of the 7.4 million, 424,000 is general fund. With 250-
Say that again.
Of the 7.4 million in total capital, 424,000 is general fund only.
Say that again.
Of the 7.4 million in total capital, 424,000 is only general fund.
All right, and I talked to you about SPOLOST earlier, remember? All right, go ahead.
1.6 million is Douglas SPOLOST, 185,000 is L-MIG. The water and sewer is 2.3 million. Sanitation and solid waste is 90,000, storm water's 100,000. I have a G-FAL loan, or planning on getting a G-FAL loan for 1.9, and the developer would be contributing around 80,000 for one of these projects. The next fund we're gonna talk about is our debt service fund. As you know, we have a Series 2015 bonds. And in March of next year, our principal payment will be due of 880,000 and our interest payment of just under 698,000. Then in September of 2022, we have our next interest payment of around 685,000. So our total debt service payment for this year, or for this upcoming year, is 2,262,488.
Okay, do you have the principal balance of that, of that debt?
I don't. The note that I did make, that the next large increase, you know, we had, where it was interest only for a while, then we started making principal payments. The next large increase will be in 2029, where our principal will go to a total of 2.7 million dollars. Or total payment would go to 2.7 million dollars, so it'd go about a half a million dollars.
Okay, and that large single payment from last year was $2 million, is that correct, in February? Was it February of last year, we, we had a $2 million?
Our total debt's up to 2.2. We haven't seen much of an increase in the last two years, but yes, when we raised the rates significantly, 75%, we were trying to get ready for the jump that she was speaking about. It was 1.75 before we jumped to 2.2 million, two years ago.
You left out two words. You said the total debt was 2.2, but it's the total debt service payment that is the 2.2.
Correct.
Do you know the total debt on this? Is it still 30? So I would remind everybody that in 2009, we paid 32 or 33 million dollars for this sewer plant. We still owe 30 million dollars on it. So when we talk about a loss in tax fees and these revenues, the decision for the growth was made in 2009 because there is no way to pay for this without it. So I want people to remember that when they think about this. We're paying for a sewer plant that was put in in 2009 for 32 some odd million dollars that we still owe 30 million dollars on. Let that sink in a minute. Go ahead.
Anybody have any questions?
Oh, that was the last slide?
Yes.
I was just getting into it. All right, counsel, does anybody have any questions in this wrap-up for, for Jennifer? All right, what you got next?
That's all I have.
Wait a minute. It's only been an hour and eight minutes. Okay, y'all want to recess for a few minutes? Is there anything else y'all wanna do?
Oh, we wanna hear back from y'all.
Well, that's, okay, so that's sort of the wrap-up here, though. Is, counsel, you've had an opportunity to go through this, you now have had the budget. Jennifer has made a presentation, you've been able to get some sort of higher level general idea of, of the, the proposed budget. You may now have some questions, or you may need some time for your, hold on just a second, for your questions. I can understand either. And, and again, we will have another one, what is the next one?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
At 6 o'clock.
All right. Now, tonight, we're doing the second millage rate hearing.
That is correct.
Okay, let me open it up for counsel to ask any questions right now before we wrap up. Mr. Young.
Just a general concern, I, I understand the figures and I understand. Just a general concern, I understand the figures. But I'm concerned about losing the progress we've made in the city. We, you know, we've made progress in infrastructure, we've made progress with personnel. Just, we've made progress in so many things. And there's an opportunity here to lose that. So I, it's just, it's just a concern of mine.
Mayor?
Yeah, Ms. McPherson.
I have plenty of questions. I just, I'm not sure what the design of the whole layout of the way we're gonna conduct these meetings. I figured we had- I figured we had four hours almost set aside. And that I didn't figure I was gonna hammer Jennifer with all my questions because I figured as we got to those departments, we'd ask the person related to it. I didn't think she probably needed to be answer the questions for what you added, or, you know, what may be in Pete's budget. So maybe you can kinda let us know the way this, the way somebody visualizes this is supposed to play out for all of us so we'll know when to ask the appropriate questions.
Sure, absolutely, let me, and I see you've got a lot of tabs over there, and you've got a lot of questions. And I don't mind, we have most department heads here now. We're certainly open to doing what, whatever feels comfortable to the council. But we wanted to be respectful of everybody's time as well. But Sarah, just give sort of a little idea of how we, we anticipated moving forward with this.
Yes, so we have, until two today, we are having lunch at Olive Tree at twelve o'clock. So, and we have almost two hours of actual budget meeting time. We have all the department heads here today. Next week's meeting is at six PM, not saying they can't be here if we don't need them, but they are here now. So this would be the time, I mean, let's go until two o'clock if that's what it takes because we have the department heads here today.
Right, I didn't know that we would move through this as fast as we did, to be honest. So even though I try to move pretty quickly always, I did, I did set aside this amount of time because I thought it'd take a little longer, but we went through it.
So why don't we take a little break, everybody?
Let's do that, let's take a little recess, we'll, we'll break for, for, what, nineteen minutes? We'll come back at eleven-thirty, and we'll start some, some back and forth with some department heads, okay? Y'all make sure we have all of them here, all right?
How about ten minutes?